Meeting to order. For those of you that wish to join me in prayer, if you stand, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all of our blessings and we pray this evening for the safety and well-being of our friends, family, and loved ones, and Houston, and those in the path of Hurricane Irma. We also prayed for the first responders and those coming to the aid and comfort of our fellow citizens. In your son's name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have a quorum this evening. Announcements.
The only announcement has to do with the next meeting. When I sent out the planning update, we weren't sure if the R-17-0009 Crossroads Associates project was going to be ready for public hearing, but in fact, it is. So that will be on the agenda for September the 20th, as well as the other two items noted in the planning update.
Very well. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is review and approval of the minutes of August 16, 2017. Our machine is still not working, so if there are no questions or comments on the minutes, I'll take a motion.
Amen.
I will take a roll call vote. Mr. Burns?
Aye.
Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Moving on to review and approval of preliminary plat, P-17-002.
Yes, Mr. floor computer, please. Let me, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this is the preliminary plat for the Cedar Forest subdivision, which was submitted and requires approval. In accordance with subdivision ordinance, section 20-3.5.1(c), the preliminary plat is for the division of 20 acres into 29 single-family lots. The property was rezoned back in March of 2017 to PDH3. The proposal, this is the proposed layout, which depicts the 29 lots and has three lots reserved for open space. The largest area is a 12-acre area that will be dedicated to the HOA. The residential lots range in the area from 6,000 to 16,000 square feet with an average size of 8,000 square feet. The plat conforms to county codes and standards and is ready for the commission to adopt a resolution of approval.
Any questions or comments on the plat? Hearing now, I'll take a motion.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the plat as stated by staff.
Second.
Mr. Burns? I'll take, yeah, Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Paying in protest.
Very well. Mr. Newhouse votes aye. Motion passes. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, CA-17-009.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Patrick White, Spotsylvania County Planning Department. This is a public hearing for ordinance 1709 for solar energy facilities. As I mentioned at our last meeting, we've had recent inquiries here at Spotsylvania for potential solar energy facility developers. Currently, a solar energy facility would be classified as a public utility heavy and very limited in where they could be located. This ordinance separates solar energy facilities into their own defined land use. It allows them to be permitted via special use permit in the A2 and A3 zoning districts, and it sets minimum standards. To do this, we're proposing to amend four sections, Division 23-214, Division 23-457, 23-633, and 643, basically the definitions, the A2, the A3 zoning districts, and the special uses standards of review. In your ordinance packet, you'll note that there are three defined terms, integrated photovoltaic material, full, like, photovoltaic material, and solar energy facility. Apart from defining those, we are also setting the standards of review, and those are currently that these facilities will require adequate emergency access, must meet all local, state, and national codes, must be screened to minimize visibility. They require the dismissal of phasing and decommissioning plans. The lands on which these facilities are located will need to be restored to a condition that will be designated in that decommissioning plan. A surety will be required to assure that the facility is removed at the end of its life cycle. If a component of the facility exceeds one year of an operable status, it may, the county may pursue action to have that component repaired or removed. Should that fail to occur, the county can use a decommissioning surety that the applicant will post in order to be sure that that's accomplished. In the event that the surety fails to fund the decommissioning either of the facility or component prior to its, the end of the facility's life cycle, or at the end of the facility's life cycle, legal action may be undertaken by the county to obtain any difference. And lastly, the changes of the ownership or the le, leasing or decommissioner shall be reported to the county within 60 days. As I mentioned previously, the other thing this ordinance does is plug in the solar energy facility into two places, one in the agricultural 2 and one in the agricultural 3 zoning districts. Per our discussion last time, we removed the clause about having non-contiguous sites on one application. I will stand by for your questions. Thank you. Oh, I guess staff is recommending approval of this ordinance.
Questions, comments for Patrick? Hearing now, I'll open up the hearing for public comment. Anybody wishes to address the commission at this time? If you would state your name and address, and when you come to the podium, it'll have a box up there. When it's green, you'll have three minutes. When it's yellow, you'll have one minute.
Okay. Good evening, Planning Commission members and county staff. My name is M.R. Foles, and I reside at 1601 Belvedere Drive, Fredericksburg, Virginia. I serve on the AG and Forestville Advisory Committee where I first learned about, about this proposal. I strongly believe and recommend that Spotsylvania County should allow solar energy facilities on 200 acres or less by right on agricultural zone land. And some of the reasons are, farming was profitable over the years, some years ago, but the growing of crops has really skyrocketed over the past 10 years, and the price that farmers get is virtually about half of what it was two years ago. So, you know, in 1940, a farmer got $4 for his bushel of wheat, and bread was 10 cents a loaf. Now, and tractors were $600, but now, farmer's only getting $3.65 for his bushel of wheat, and tractors are 125,000, 150,000 up, and combined to harvest the wheats, a half a million and up, and, and, and bread's $3 a loaf. So, it gives you a little idea that virtually, there's no profit in farming. So, the farmer has no economic way to continue, especially if he's got long-term medical needs, just to name one thing. So, many farmers will be forced to sell. So, to head off sprawl, I think it would be prudent and, and wise to allow solar, a commercial solar units on 200 acres or less by right on agricultural land. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Nida Robertson. I live at 10-400 Campbell Drive. I'm also a farmer, and I have a farm off of Massipodics Church Road. I also agree with Mr. Foles for the same reasons. As a small farmer, without the use of solar energy to propel your wells, electrical lighting, it's going to make farming difficult for the small farmer. And solar energy is a safe way to harvest, you know, energy to supplement your farm. And for those reasons, I, I think that small farmers should be allowed to use solar energy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Very well, at this point, I will close the hearing, public hearing, and take any comments or questions from the commission.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Barnes, could you turn on your mic?
Thank you. Everything we've looked at, been in the terms or in the context of a solar farm, I guess my question to staff is, in terms of just solar use for individual farms, that they wanted to use it for whatever, whether it was, this, again, because it's solar, would still fall into this same thing. So there's no carve-out or anything at this point for some smaller use of solar energy. I'm talking about, in consideration of, we're talking about multiple, multiple acres with solar panels in versus a farm that was using it exclusively for themselves or something else. I just was curious about that. Am I correct?
Well, the approach that we used was to handle this through the definition of a solar energy facility. And the solar energy facility, which, which you need a special use for in this current ordinance, the definition states that it generates electricity from sunlight using photovoltaic material and other structures or facilities within the boundaries of the site, and does not meet any of the following criteria: being mounted on or over a building or parking lot or other previously disturbed area, or integrating, or using integrated photovoltaic materials such as photovoltaics that are built into building materials, like the, the new roof shingles. So while this ordinance was aimed at these larger users, I believe that the gentleman's concern is valid, and, and what he's describing, he's describing using the entire farm as a solar farm. However, Ms., Ms. Robertson's concern about using solar to power a well or to, you know, power other equipment on the farm would be accessory too. I don't believe that would fall into this definition, but it does sound as though the gentlemen's would.
Can, can I ask?
Sure thing.
M.R., can I ask a question, please? In the context of you're talking about, I mean, I'm familiar with your operation. Are you talking about running, you know, like Belvedere or that type of operation? I know you've got pumps, you've got irrigation, all that. Is that something?
Well, what I'm referring to is, is, is commercial installations of, of 200 acres or less of an actual solar installation, not just.
Okay, all right, so yours, okay.
Not just, because that would allow for income that, that.
Okay.
Farmers that have, you know, good-sized acreage, but still, there's no profit in farming, and, and, and so, in order, so they got a choice. They either got to sell the land, and, or.
In this case, this ordinance.
Or there's a possibility of commercial-sized solar installations of 200 acres or less that would be applicable, would save a family farm, keep them from selling the land, and so reduce sprawl.
All right, thank you. But the other lady was referring primarily to her use on her farm, correct? Okay, I just, I just tried to carve the two out.
If, if, excuse me. If I may, what this lady wants to do, I didn't think it'd come into this thing at all.
I would agree.
I mean, like, if I wanted to put solar panels in my house or run my own juice, I shouldn't have any problem with that.
You would not meet the definition of this.
I thought this whole ordinance had to do with people deliberately building a facility for specific resale of electricity to the general public.
Or a commercial business, or, yeah, they're using the solar cells to generate facility to sell or put on the power grid, or.
Because we've always been able to, we've always been able to with, with the wind turbines and everything else. When you install these things, if you don't use that electricity, the power companies are obligated to buy your excess electricity from you. That's already in the world.
Yeah, we're not aiming to prevent that with this. This is for these.
Right. Well, I, I, maybe we can curtail this thing to focus specifically on intended commercial resale, period.
Mr. Smith?
Patrick, is, is there anything in here that, maybe I'm missing it, that would prohibit somebody that had 200 acres or less from doing this?
No, but they would go through the special use prom, uh, process. What the gentleman is advocating is that for smaller projects on anything less than 200 acres, that they don't have to go through the special use process, that they could pull it off administratively.
They could use it.
Say again?
They could use the system.
They could use this system and go through the special use process and permit a facility of any size.
What he's talking about is by right?
He wants a, yes, that's what he wants, is, is for a by-right provision.
For, for a farming operation.
It would basically just be for one of these, but on a smaller or less than 200.
No, I think, I think the distinguishing point here is that it's a farm. If it's a farm use, then providing solar power by right is what, is what the comment is. If it's a piece of commercial property or otherwise, then it would have to go through the, 200 acres or less would have to go through the special use permit process. But I think the gentleman was referring to a farm use, zoned farm, farm, you know, agricultural for a farm use. Is my take.
These would hypothetically all be on A2 or A3 properties and subject to that argument.
Is that, is that true?
Yeah.
Is it hypothetical, or is it true?
This ordinance before you would only allow these on A2 and A3 zoned properties.
Okay. Ms. Carter?
Yes. I mean, I know the property that Mrs. Robertson was speaking of, and like she said, it's agricultural, it's commercial, and so therefore, would, as Mr. Foles said, 200 acres or less. So what category would Mrs. Robertson and her farm in agriculture, what she's doing, how would this affect her?
I do not foresee an impact on her to install solar panels with a building permit to power a well or to power a, I believe she said a security fence, or, or something along those, along that nature. However, if she's proposing to set up a field of these to power, or to sell her electricity to Dominion or to someone, some other company perhaps, then it would meet this definition.
All right, so therefore, if she wasn't going to sell it, but she was going to use it for her own use, for their own use of their business, that's okay?
Mr. Chairman? Give me one minute, and I'll, I'll confirm that. I want to look real close at our definition.
Mr. Chairman, just real quickly, I think we can, I was looking at definition two, but under definition where it says solar energy facility or SEF means, goes on down, but if you look down to the bottom, it says is mounted on or over a building or parking lot or other previously disturbed area or utilized integrated. It just, that, it might be a little, I don't know. What I don't want to do is get to the point where if we do this, and then somebody like this has an issue. So we need to clarify it.
Absolutely.
We just need to seal it real clear what the intent is.
That's right, exactly. That's, that's, that's where I'm coming from. I think it's too many questions out there now, you know, that we really are not answering, and, and that it's clear in everyone's mind what they can do and what they can't do.
I am.
As either, mine especially.
I am getting a sense that there may be some value to have a component in the definition about what the energy is used for, and whether it's for commercial use or for, let's call it, farm or personal use, and drawing the distinction between the two.
Have you contacted any other smaller farm agricultural businesses? Have you contacted any of them to get feedback?
On this ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
Directly?
Mm-hmm.
No, ma'am?
Okay.
I am correct, though, but, but under this ordinance, they would be able to do it if they're, if they're agricultural one or two. Am I correct?
Uh, two or three. We don't have an AG one anymore, but no problem.
Two or three. Am I correct?
And to be clear, they being, which, which one of the two cases?
Well, the farmers. I'm not talking about personal use. If, if Mr. Foles wants to put in 200 acres of, of solar panels, he, if this was adopted, he would be able to do it. He just would have to go through the process like, like, like the other companies.
That's right. He would just have to go through the special use process.
Right. But he would be allowed.
He would be allowed to apply into the special use process? Yeah.
Absolutely.
And the reason we set it up this way was because we wanted originally, and I believe still do, to look at these individually, regardless of how big they are, or how large they are, to look at the things like what impact they're going to have on their neighbors and how they're going to be managed.
Mr. Thompson first, he's been waiting.
Oh, I, maybe I didn't clarify this. I thought this thing was aimed specifically at some company that wants to come in amongst us and decide they want to manufacture solar electricity as a business for pure profit. And maybe we need to determine how large a system we have to have in order to support some individual company or corporation that wants to go into this specific business only. As far as I'm concerned, if somebody like Mr. Foles has a farm and he wants to put up five or 10 acres of solar heat, of solar panels and to use them for himself, and he can sell it what's left over for $100 a month, well, maybe we need to determine what the profit line is and how large a facility you have to have in order to make it a business, a profitable business. Farmers are historically cobbled to gather an income, $10 here, $100 there, and, and if that's what we're referring to, I don't have a problem with that. Now, we may have another bridge to cross if he decides to turn 200 acres into it and start making $10,000 a month income off of solar electricity. Now, that's another matter, because that's not sidelined anymore. This is, thank you.
Mr. Medina?
So my biggest concern with the by-right of any size is the inability for us to decommission these properly potentially. And so if you had 100 acres that were out there that didn't have to go through the special use permit, they would have, county would have no recourse if that was, were to be abandoned, and something were to happen, a battery that was there to store the power leaks into the ground, now it's on the county. So that's my, my only concern with even a by-right use is the fact that we just don't have the experience or knowledge to know what happens if these are abandoned, and what happened, you know, whose responsibility is it? Well, it's going to be the counties to go in and remove them properly as opposed to going through the special use permit. There's some recourse there with the decommission plan. So that's, that's my only concern about, you know, by right.
Mr. Smith, you also, any, any other questions or comments? Mr. Burns?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to make a motion. We continue it to the next meeting, and we get some clarification, I think, and give staff some direction. Clearly, that we want to make sure there's, it says in the definitions, instead, for personal use or farm use, or what we've kind of been discussing, but it puts that outside. I think at a minimum, we need to at least look at that. So I, I move that we continue it, and let staff bring back and clean that up a little bit and give them time to look at it.
I, Mr.?
Yes, Ms. Carter.
I'm, Mr. Barnes's opinion. There's too many questions out there that we have not answered and have not got answers to. And I would ask you, please, to call, I mean, to contact the Robersons and answer their concerns and what they can do and what they can't do. Also, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Then that answers a lot of questions for a small farmer, you know, that doesn't maybe have a lot of acreage, but has enough that they could use this, and that they're in the commercial business. And I think we have to look for the smaller areas as well as the larger, if that's what we're going to do.
If it allows for their ability to keep the farm, I'm all in favor as well, but it needs to be ferreted out. So the motion on the table is to continue it for 30 days?
Second.
Is that fair enough? 30 days, Patrick?
Is that okay with you, Patrick?
I don't think I need that long.
We'll give you, we'll give you 30 days.
All right, sir.
Okay. Does that work?
That's fine, yes. And I just wanted to clarify, it's to continue it to allow us to amend the definition to make clear that it doesn't include personal use.
Yes, and also the comment about the by-right issue, I would like to have explored as well, because in my opinion, if a farmer's able to, and without getting, you know, being careful of the unintended consequence of if, if we allow a farmer to do this by right and then just flipping it, or.
And just turning it into.
Yeah.
Well.
I think that needs some analysis.
Yeah, they can look at it. My only comment would be on that, we have to be careful because depending on where that 200 acres is at, or minimum, and the effect that that would have. But, you know, I think it can be looked at. I don't even know if it's cost-effective.
Well, agreed, and I'm not even hung up on the 200 acres. I'm, I'm interested in a farmer utilizing his property to keep his property, keep his farming operation is my concern here, and I think that deserves a little bit of.
And the other comment I would make is if we modify the definitions to protect for personal use and stuff, we probably, well, I don't know what they'll see, but when we come back, maybe we don't have to have another public hearing. If we're expanding it outside that, that might require, I don't know if it would or not, but.
Exactly, well, we'll take, we'll take guidance from staff on that.
That's my motion.
All right, so the motion is.
One more thing, I, I would like, if, if we're going to do that and look at the, at the by-right, because I think Mr. Medina brought up an interesting thing, is who's responsible if they close down to clean it up?
You can, you can, Patrick, I don't want to speak for you, but you can have a by-right ordinance that still requires certain things, correct?
That's what I'm thinking, too, sir.
So, yes. So you can still have a, you know, reclamation plan or a recom, a decommissioning plan or all these things, but it still can be by right?
Yes.
It's just like a site plan. A site plan can, is, we have by-right site plans, but they still have certain standards they have to meet.
We do. The, I don't want to say challenging, but the nuance there is, is just setting up those, those limits, setting those boundaries. And right now, the special use approach that we're using allows us a great deal of flexibility to look at them one by one. Once we start allowing them by right, we have to, we have to find a way to define and narrow what we would actually allow. For example, what if any separation do these facilities need from property lines? What if any buffers do these need from property lines?
So you, you still want the 30 days?
I'd love the 30 days.
Yes, sir, okay.
All right.
All right, let's move this along. Go ahead, Mr. Medina.
One, one other thing, and if you knew research, you might already have this, I thought I read that there was legislation out there that was brought by the power companies, entities, that were limiting the ability for you to sell back on, on an individual basis, sell back power, because you're not paying for their transmission lines, you're not paying for this, you're not paying for all those things. I just want to make sure that we can still, in Virginia, have the ability, or in this locality, have the ability to sell back as part of this, because if not, then you would have to have an agreement with, with them, them being whoever you're, you're selling it back to.
Okay, we'll look into it.
Well, may I say one more thing?
Yes, Ms. Carter.
I, I was like Mr. Thompson. I was a little confused, because I was thinking about, you know, this huge thing, almost like Virginia Power, something like that. I didn't know what was coming, you know, in here. But now that I understand it better, and as I stated, I would personally want you to contact the Robersons, because I'm looking out for the small person, too, who has a farm. There are a whole lot of those, you know, in our area, and I certainly want to know and be fair in what they can do, okay?
Of course, thank you.
Thank you.
So are we clear, Patrick? I guess.
The, the uncertainty I have is whether or not you're expecting an amendment to this to allow these by right up to a certain, within certain limits, or whether you want us to just explore it.
Ms. Chairman, I, I think you're going to, as you walk through it, there's a difference between tweaking definitions and then expand it like we want in terms of, did this public hearing cover, and it didn't? I, I'm not legal, and I'm not going to speak for the attorney, but that's where you're going to run into it. But I think for this commission to make a decision, we need to know all, everything that's in the basket.
Absolutely.
If I may, my, my whole thing is a distinction between whether it's just a. If I may, my, my whole thing is a distinction between whether it's just a pocket change, extra money, or whether it's a full-blown profitable enterprise. Maybe we need to determine how large an area we have to, we're dealing with for somebody to say they're going to go in business making electricity for these items.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well, so we have a motion on the table to...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Could I just clarify that by 30 days, do you mean October the 4th? Would that be the, the date?
Yes, yeah, would, that would be the closest meeting to the...
The closest date to 30 days?
Very well, yes. So, October the 4th, thank you.
Well, I hope that we can receive along, instead of everything at one time, give us an update on different things that we find out, you know, so that we can study them to a great extent, and if we have questions, it's better for us to question staff, Patrick, at that time. So, if we could periodically have updates on what you're finding, okay?
Okay, I'll, I'll check in with you at the next meeting.
I just have one quick question.
Sure.
When you talk about special use permit, what kind of charge are we talking about?
There isn't a fee set for it yet. That'd be something I believe we'd have to evaluate.
Well, it would be the special use fee.
Oh, it would be the standard fee?
It would be the standard fee.
What is that?
It's about $8,000?
What?
It, it depends on the acreage of the project. So, it, it probably starts at about, you're probably right, probably somewhere around $7,000, $8,000 on up for a large project.
Boy, what?
For the application?
I know, but a large project, you said, that much?
It's based off the acreage, yeah, for a large project.
Correct. If we had 1,000 acres come in, it would certainly be a larger fee.
Oh, okay, 1,000 acres, that's different, okay.
Still a lot of money.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion on the table to extend for 30, to October 4th. Do we, do we need to clarify the motion any further? I think we're, I think we're all set. Okay, so I'll take a, I'll take a second on the motion.
Aye.
And I'll call the vote. Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes, extend to 30 days. We'll see you then, Patrick. Next is the closed meeting. Ms. Pauling, I guess you're up.
Whereas the Spotsylvania County Planning Commission has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712D requires a certification by this commission that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved, I apologize, I read the wrong resolution, that was to come back into open session? Good practice. Let's try that again. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Planning Commission desires to adjourn into closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically relating to planning commission policies and procedure, and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7, such discussions may occur in closed session, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Planning Commissioners do hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
I will call the vote. Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We will go into closed session.
And in a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712D requires a certification by this commission that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Planning Commission hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll-call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion to go into closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Any other new business? Any other public comment? Hearing none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Still move.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much.